According to the detectives, they do not know what yet, but they are interrelated. So I would like to share this from what I've seen from my business. Okay, let's get started, everyone. Like I say, welcome to the Kent City Council First Committee of the Whole, the second time around here. So we're going to get started here. A couple of things we're going to do. Let's call the meeting in order, and I'm going to ask Kamala Tate Roll call, please.
Thank you. Council President Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher.
Coming in.
Coming in. Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, before we get started, Pat have a couple of words you want to share with us, and then we'll get started with the agenda approval. Pat, please.
Yeah, thank you. Pat Fitzpatrick, CEO for Kent. I just want to take a couple of minutes. This is our first shot at the second round of Committee of the Whole. And as you know, we have the new process of handing the, not, I guess figuratively handing the gavel and chairpersonship among council members during the meeting. This agenda has items from every committee of the council this time. This time in this meeting only, the council president is going to hand chairmanship over to everybody who has a matter that they are chair for. So typically, as you recall, today would usually be operations, public safety, and parks and human services. And if there was a public works matter, it would go into the operations section handled by the council president. But because of the way the agenda was set up this time, we're just going to have the gavel passed around for this one meeting. Apologize for that, but we will make sure that they flow in the way that it's set up. This is a new process, and if we need to make adjustments, we can. Remember, these are your rules, so we're going to give this a shot and see how it goes. And take it from there. So I just wanted to give you that real quick briefing. And the other thing I want to note is, this is the busiest time of year for our committees. Beginning of summer is when we have a ton of public work contracts coming through because summer is public works time. And so, and we have another, many other initiatives come through this, this time of year. As you know, for some of your committees, there have been a lot of cancellations up until about April. Things get busy for a while, and then they taper off again. So this is kind of a hard time to start the committee, the whole process, but we're here. So we're going to give this a shot, and if we need to make adjustments, we always can. So.
Okay.
Sound good?
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate that. I just want to say, at the end of the day, we do want to streamline the process. We got feedback from our directors about, you know, things that kind of make their job a little easier, and then also want to be efficient, right? So, you know, it's a work in progress, you know? Nothing is perfect on the first term, but we will get there as a council. So thank you for sharing that, but I think we are moving in the right direction. Okay. Let's move on to item number three, agenda approval. I want to ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Submove.
Second.
Motion and a second, and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye or opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Okay. Let's see here, what are you doing, Bill? So we have a couple of things to do. So we have approval of prior committed meetings here, one, two, and three, four. So I'm going to ask for a motion for that, please. Item A.
Item A.
In discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Okay. Got to pay the bills. Item number B, motion, please. So go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I'm not.
Prove the payment of the bills.
Motion is second. In discussion. Guys, we have to pay the bills, okay? It's okay. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Okay. We're going to move on to item number C, and this is amendment to the Regional Water Supply System Repayment Agreement, and we have Courtney. Is this your first time presenting?
It is.
All right, we are ready for you. Let's go.
Call out the rookie. Good afternoon, council. Courtney Black, Deputy Finance Director, yes, first time before you. Bringing to you an amendment to the Regional Water Supply System Repayment Agreement. Want to first say that this is pretty just a technical adjustment type of item in nature, so I'm going to be very streamlined with my comments, but please feel free to follow up with questions, of course. The existing repayment agreement includes three parties: Covington Water District, the city of Tacoma, and the city of Kent. The bonds that are being repaid in this repayment agreement are eligible for refinancing, and that's what the city of Tacoma is doing. At that time, that gives the option for parties to repay their portion of the bonds. The Covington Water District has elected to do so. And so this repayment agreement does not have a financial impact. It's technical to excise Covington Water District from the repayment agreement and reset the shares among the city of Tacoma and the city of Kent. The final details on some of the pieces of the agreement are still being worked out, so this has the nature of it's subject to acceptable final terms and conditions that we'll be sure to be reviewing legal and financial before it gets signed. So again, it's a technical change, no financial impact. Eventually, the related bond refinancing will generate debt service savings for the city. That's expected to close in August or September of this year. So with that, I can answer any questions related to this.
Any question, team? Okay. We need a motion here, please.
Mr. President, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the amended Regional Water Supply System Repayment Agreement, which removes Covington Water District since they have elected to pay off their share of the repayment obligation during the 2023 bond refunding, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the finance director and city attorney.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is Covington, are there other water system involved in this here too, right? Is this Covington the only one stepping away?
So the original repayment, the, let's hear, so the Regional Water Supply System partners include Tacoma, Kent, Covington Water District, and Lake Haven Water and Sewer District. Lake Haven elected to pay their costs upfront and didn't participate in the joint financing.
Got you.
And then, so the three parties in the joint financing, now Covington is leaving, and it will only be Tacoma and Kent.
Got you. Thank you. Any other question? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, all opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Thank you. And Courtney, you did a phenomenal job. Okay? All right, let's move on to item number D, April 2023 Finance Report. And Michelle always bring us good news, so we're looking forward to it. Hannah Smaile.
I will try not to disappoint. Hi. I'm Michelle Ferguson, the Financial Planning Manager, and I will be presenting the April 2023 Monthly Financial Report. Okay, so the general fund revenues are coming in right on budget at 33.3% of budgeted revenues received through April. But as you go through the report, you may notice that some of the tax revenues have a large variance from the prior years. And as you recall, during the 2324 budget process, we decided to shift some revenues around for property tax, sales tax, and the internal utility taxes between the general fund and the capital resources fund. So you can see the property tax, we received a lot last year, and we're about half of that this year. Same with, and sales tax, had an 80/20 split between the general fund and the capital resources fund, and now it's 100% being receded into the general fund. On the next slide, the utilities.
We're going to put, we'd eventually adjust those targets, I mean, goes right now?
So the, the targets are, the budgeted is that thicker blue.
Right.
Line, that's kind of the budget. The green is prior year, 2022, and then the dark blue is 2023.
Okay.
So the utility tax that's top also changed. It used to have a portion of going to the capital resources fund, and now that has shifted to be into the general fund as well. But all these revenue shifts that were offset also by an expenditure shift that also then moved to the capital resources fund. So overall, you can see property tax, large, large variance, but percent of budget is coming in over the target. FNO and other taxes are coming in slightly under budget, but those are receded quarterly and then have a month-long lag, so they should be coming in closer to the percent of budget next, during the next report. Miscellaneous revenues, on the other hand, are coming in very, very strong. We're seeing pre-pandemic revenue levels. So the revenues in that miscellaneous line are going to be interest income, as well as reimbursements for police overtime and school resource officers, as well as parks, rentals for space and field use, and also for the senior center. And then when we go and look at all of the other funds, there, none of the funds are concerning, there's nothing of significance to talk about, but I wanted to kind of explain a few of these funds that have very large variances. So the first one is the lodging tax fund. And in 2022, we, there was a transfer from the general fund to the lodging tax fund to kind of mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19, and so there was a large transfer in. But on top of that, there are, there is an increase in the revenues from, when you look at 2021, because the revenues for lodging tax has also returned to pre-pandemic levels as well. So we're seeing kind of the amount we were seeing in 2019. The capital resources fund, those, that has a large variance as well, and that is because of the shifting of revenue and expenditures with the, between the two, the general fund and the capital resources fund. And on this slide, the Special Assessment Debt Service Fund has a large variance in the revenues, and that's because there was a $20,000 transfer in from the general fund to mitigate a negative fund balance that was in that fund. And on this last slide, there wasn't really anything to highlight. I just wanted to point out, for some of the insurance funds, there isn't a large variance from one year to the next, but there is a larger variance for the workers' comp and liability insurance fund between the revenues and expenditures. And that's because those insurance premiums are paid in the beginning of the year, so it's going to take a little over halfway through the year before those revenues and expenditures kind of even out. Are there any questions?
Any question, guys? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All righty, things on track, and that's good. Okay, we're going to move on to item E, and I'm going to turn this over to Chair Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. We just have one item on the economic and community development side. I would like to welcome Bill Ellis. Hi, Bill. He is going to talk about the ARPA relocation and agreements with National Development Council.
Thank you, council members. Nice to see you all. I've presented a couple of different times on this topic of commercial affordability to the council in the past, full council and also to our committee. I'm here to take a few actions with you on that. So just to revisit, what is commercial affordability versus commercial displacement? We had talked about those definitions in the past. And commercial affordability are some of the challenges that businesses face when they're expanding or relocating to afford new and larger spaces, or new construction, new buildings, or other locations. Commercial displacement is when you have a lot of redevelopment in an area, and existing building businesses find it difficult to stay in that area. If you look at the city of Kent, actually, 80% of our commercially zoned land is a qualified, our federally designated qualified census tracts of lower income and presumed disadvantages for businesses in expanding. So a large portion of our city would qualify for the use of federal funds along these lines that I will propose today. And I've mentioned here, I've made prior presentations on this. Capital, the access to capital, is a barrier for our local businesses to participate in new construction, let's say of a mixed-use multifamily project, or to just simply take from their existing location where they might have a comfortable rent payment but need to go and outfit the tenant improvements in other locations. We've talked about this in the past, about the variety of costs that businesses face that are perhaps hidden generally to the public, even in outfitting or tenant improvements, which are typically asked of a business owner going into a new space or to an existing building even. It's hundreds of dollars a square foot just for the soft cost component of that. And so if you're moving into a thousand-square-foot coffee shop, it might take you $400, $500,000 upfront saved together in addition to your rent to be able to outfit that space and make it available for a restaurant or coffee use. So today's motion is going to respond to, of all the different strategic response areas we talked in the past, improving permit customer service, access to technical assistance, affordable spaces. And I'm joined here by Melissa Lafayette of National Development Council, who's worked with us on the pilot project piece of this around the commercial affordability permit assistance that we've talked about with Green River College and others. Today, we're talking about access to capital. So National Development Council, thanks to council, put forward about $1.6 million originally of the $2.6 million budgeted to National Development Council for lending. That is now closed. $3.2 million were lent to Kent businesses, 33 businesses in all, 84.8% identifying as diverse business owners, 14.5% black or African-American, 24% Asian-owned, 12% Latinx-owned, 3% self-identified as LGBTQ+, and veteran-owned was 3%, women-owned 39%. So thanks to NDC's efforts working with the city of Kent, we were made, able to make available more low-interest loans at about 4.5% interest rate up through March, which was, I think, really good in the interest and rate environment that we had. We had pushed forward, though, last time I came to council as a whole on this, $1 million to commercial affordability. I am suggesting today that we work also to pull the $600,000 that we had budgeted for childcare expansion, associate that with $1 million for commercial affordability, do both of those things together, but privilege a portion of the funding in the grant pass through that I'm proposing we do with National Development Council for childcare expansion specifically and for early learning specifically, as a portion of the awards made. It's an efficient way to pass through more funding in the form of grants. And I think these grants would be best served in the phases of pre-development, which architecture analysis, engineering, design permits, financial planning, legal fees, all of this is a capital barrier for catalyzing the development of a business or nonprofit that's delivering daycare or early learning services into new spaces. These are all the upfront costs that are very hard to save up for. So, but for the catalyst of this grant, I think we would not see several projects move forward in the city of Kent. So what we're proposing today is to take the $600,000 budgeted for childcare expansion, associate it with the $1 million already taken, set aside for commercial affordability for American Recovery Act, put those together, pass those through NDC Grant Portal, additionally have a technical assistance contract with Economic and Community Development for $100,000 over two years to establish the program and support the city of Kent staff in talking with and vetting through projects. We would propose that the grants, about four to eight on a lighting scale of $200,000 to roughly half a million dollars, depending on what we get through the grant portal, would be selected by National Development Council, but similar to our small emergency business grant project from some years ago with a different CDFI, Craft III, we would develop the scoring criteria city with the CDFI, and then allow the evaluation of the grants be made on basis of community impact, project viability, and equity, and prioritizing BIPOC, women-owned, LGBTQ+, veteran-owned, women-owned businesses and nonprofits for support through this grant. This covers what I just said. National Development Council is a national expert in public-private partnerships and commercial real estate development. Worked with them, as I mentioned, on the Flex Fund, and they can support the city's efforts in establishing and administering this grant program and also be on, Melissa Lafayette, and her, as Field Director, NDC would be on call as staff support to the city on technical assistance around this program, especially in the early phases, and then generally to other projects. With that, yield to questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from council members? Council President Boyce.
Okay, thank you. For the success, I mean, what is the outcome? How do we know this is working, what this looked like?
I think what you would look for in terms of the awards made were businesses that perhaps could not expand into another location or could not move forward into a new building coming into fruition. So you'd be looking for jobs created, the, off of the new expansion of the business. You'll be looking for the number of businesses supported. You could be in the case of nonprofits that are, let's say, delivering early learning or nonprofit education, being able to afford a brick-and-mortar location in a new affordable housing project or into an existing space that they couldn't otherwise afford by having all those capital costs covered. So I think what you would look for is four to eight awardees and successfully moving into their, into their new projects on the basis of the catalytic pre-development granting.
But will we see, I mean?
Yeah, we will see who is selected. You would see who is selected.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Michelle, followed by Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, do you recall what council said they wanted to use the $600,000 for, or was it just open-ended childcare?
It was for, it was, we had a discussion of it at the time, I recall very well. We talked about supply side versus demand side, and we were talking about on the supply side. So rather than helping childcare, people afford childcare, this was for businesses to expand. So it was on the, it was on increasing the capacity. I remember Councilmember Fincher's question along those lines from when we talked about that originally. So this would still be honoring that original purpose of funds. It would, we could work with the scoring criteria to advantage the $600,000 of the $1.6 million, go for those type of applicants at a higher level. It's just, it seemed more efficient, given the nature of working with them as business owners, to just have one common grant portal.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. Bill, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So of the 1.6 million, only the $600,000 would be going to the childcare?
That's correct.
Or would all 1.6 million be eligible for childcare businesses?
We haven't crossed that bridge just yet because we haven't established the program or a scoring criteria. NDC would work with staff to do that. What I am suggesting is that we would take $600,000, and we would honor the original purpose of those funds in the scoring criteria and weight a certain portion of the money to those applications that came from earlier childcare or childcare early learning providers as a portion of it. But we want to have a wider pool because there are grocers in our community, there are other businesses that frankly ask all the time, can I move into this location? Can I afford to build this? They have pre-application processes, and the answer is often, no, they can't afford it. And, but for some support, these businesses can't take the next, local businesses can't expand into the real estate product that sometimes we have vacant.
So if we had enough applicants that say $800,000 is being requested for childcare businesses?
Yeah.
Would we potentially still be able to award $800,000?
I think at this point, it's fair to say we still potentially could do that. I just don't know what the final pool of applicants will be.
Okay. And that actually kind of leads to my next question, is how are we going to communicate this to childcare?
Yeah.
Community, or do we already have kind of like, do we, we know people that are asking for this? Do we have candidates in mind?
You know, it's fair and transparent to say that we do know candidates who have come forward, and I see Melissa was about ready to speak, and I think I'll ask you to answer it well. But just like with the Flex Fund, it was cooperative where we advertised the grant portal. We're not going to keep, this is not a secret grant operation, this is a public setting, this is a public grant. This would be publicly accessible with peculiarly communicated goals and objectives and criteria that we would establish for the grants. And so the applications could come from all sorts of places that I may not hear of today, but, you know, we'll hear of later. So it would be an open grant. And Melissa, if you'd like to add to that, please, please do.
No, you said it perfectly. Just, I would say we would set aside a portion of the funding for early learning or childcare, but I think, you know, depending on the number and nature of applicants and competitiveness, we'd be working with the city to structure eligibility and prioritization. And so I think it could definitely be possible that more would be eligible for.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Fincher, did you have a question?
Thank you. More of a comment. I appreciate Councilmember Larmour's question, and I know that there is an association of childcare providers, at least down here in the South End. And just to that point, just to give credence, this money is needed on back on both ends. We know there's still a shortage of childcare providers, and sometimes for someone to get set up as a childcare provider, there's legally things that they have to do to their building that they can't necessarily afford to do on their own. So this is going to benefit the entire community because people can't work, they don't have a place to take their kids.
There's a lot of other economic impact.
Yes.
To having that dearth of childcare, and yes, there is a lot of barriers upfront to cost.
Safe childcare is important, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Any other questions or comments from council?
All right. With that, I would like to move that we reallocate $600,000 of ARPA funds budgeted for expansion and startup of business and nonprofit daycare and early learning operators to the commercial affordability grant program. To award to the National Development Council 1.6 million in ARPA funds to use to award grants to Kent businesses, to contract with National Development Council to establish a commercial affordability grant program, and provide technical assistance at a cost of $100,000, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Economic and Community Development Director and City Attorney. That was a lot.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, for the record, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That ends all the business for Economic and Community Development.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to pass the baton over to... Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Council President. Okay, we are going to hear...
I'm going to pass the baton over to Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Council President. Okay. We are going to hear about Goods and Services Agreement with Totum Logistics, and we are ready to go.
All right. Thank you, council members. It's an honor to speak with you all this afternoon. My name is Tony DiNati. I'm the Conservation Coordinator here in the Public Works Department up in Engineering. Today, I'm requesting council authorize an agreement with Totum Logistics to be our on-call cleanup hauler for city properties maintained and owned by the Public Works Department. We are all well aware of how there's an increasing problem with unauthorized dumping and encampments on city-owned properties and right-of-ways. Typically, when dumping occurs on city property, our operations team must go out and find qualified junk haulers, collect those bids, create a contract, and then finally remove the debris. At times, this can be a very lengthy process. Depending on the circumstances, our public works team, operations team, may be able to take care of it and clean it up themselves, but due to the size and the amount of dumping, that process may become unmanageable for them. This creates a problem because, as we know, the more trash that's out there for the amount of time, it can accumulate more. So securing this contract would allow, it would allow us to go out and take care of these much more quickly. So here's a map of some of the identified areas that we've already located and are ready to move on as soon as this contract is approved. We have the McSorley area, I don't know, the McSorley area in the bottom left, McSorley Creek. There's a couple camps up along Veterans Drive. We have a couple locations on city-owned property down along Green River Road. And then up north, there's a Spring Brook encampment that's gotten very large. And then just south of 240th on the East Hill, along 112th, there's an identified location there. So again, we're just looking to get this approved so we can start moving on these right-of-ways. In March, staff advertised an RFP for the on-call cleanup contractor, and after a thorough review of the six proposers that we received, staff recommends working with Totum Logistics to perform this work. The city has a very good relationship with Totum as they were awarded the same contract back in December of '21. So today, again, I'm requesting approval of this contract with Totum Logistics for on-call cleanup services of unauthorized dumping on city-owned property. This amount would not exceed $175,000 and would go through November 21st of 2024. Funding for this cleanup would come from the Drainage Utility Fund, capital projects that require cleanup on those, on those projects, and then the Department of Ecology's Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Grant, the LSWFA grant. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Yes.
Tony, add to the list that you have is what we call commonly the trail behind showware.
Okay.
Lot of problems there, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Council President.
How do we know that's enough funding? I mean, you got quite a few sites. You only got 100, $5,000 to me. It doesn't quite sound like it's enough money.
Yeah, so this is the amount that we've identified for this amount of period, and we do have additional funds coming up in '24, even lengthier. But for this amount, we want to make sure that we have a certain amount for this one contract, and then we can either extend it, we have enough money we fill in the background to extend it, or if we feel like the contractor, we want to reopen it and get rebids, we can do so.
Just a follow-up question. How many of these sites are repeatable? I mean, because you just dumped the money, right? You know, and I just wonder, are there any, once we clean it, how can we prevent it from people going back just every year?
Right. Right. I mentioned the McSorley Creek, and that's one that we cleaned up. We took out 44 tons of trash last October from that site up on the, on the West Hill. And what our team does, our operations team, they go out there and they try to maintain, they, they were taking a couple hundred pounds every week out of that location, but it's just got to be unmanageable for them, and they have other duties also. But part of it is to go around and try to maintain. It became unmanageable, so that at this point, they just had to throw their hands up, and they're waiting for this to be approved so we, so we can get some additional help.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
And even with that, I would think at the point of, you mentioned keeping them out.
Yeah.
You know, I've seen people, they clear it one day, and then the next week, they're back. It's a wooded area specific to McSorley, and so they start creeping in there, and until somebody sees and reports it, because it's not that our police department isn't busy enough already, as we know, so they can't go through all the time. It's not an area that our Parks Department is going to be going through because it's not a park. And so really, until we could keep, there was a barrier to keep them out, and then what kind of barrier would that even be? We haven't found that yet. Or until something was there, it's a wetland, so nothing is going to be there. And something that really is important about that one is the groundwater that's below, so the environmental impact.
Right.
So, yeah, we're going to be looking at this again, and we still have the other, this is separate from the contract with Uplift, Uplift Northwest?
Yes, in King County and Uplift, yeah.
So yes, definitely, this will not be the end.
Thank you.
Did you have questions, Councilmember? Councilmember Cor?
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Thank you, Tony. It's always great to see you. I think my, my question is kind of similar to Council President Voice's. So they are, in addition to our operations team and on-call, so how many calls, how many times can you call them before you run out of 175? I mean, that's not a lot.
Yeah, so some of the larger encampments that we've seen and received quotes on previously range from about like 30,000. So those are some of the larger ones. So we feel we can get multiple ones of those that cost about 30,000. McSorley, back in November, that was a higher amount, but that was like six years' worth of debris in huge areas. So that was kind of an outlier. But some of these that we've already identified, we believe, and we've gotten, again, some other quotes on them in previous years, that a larger one could be in a range of 30,000. So we feel, again, we could get a couple, several of those size with this contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I just want to clarify. You said that this goes, this contract goes through November of next year. You said 2024, but then there's also additional funds coming for 2024?
So, yeah, we do have, there is, within the Drainage Utility, we do have 200,000 this year for cleanup and then 200,000 next year for cleanup. For right-of-way projects, we don't have, that's a different pot, and so we're going to be using some, some dollars that we've secured from the LSWFA grant to take care of right-of-way issues. And then again, anything in capital project, that project will take care of it. So we wanted to extend it through 2024. That gives us two summers' worth of cleanups where it's going to be very active. And because like you can, McSorley, it's so wet up there that we couldn't necessarily even get in, and people couldn't necessarily create as much camp as compared to when it dries out. So again, the summer season gives us the most availability to these wetland areas.
And that having the, the contract for them to do the huge cleanups also allows our guys, because they still get calls that there's garbage at a bus stop that Metro isn't taking care of, that we have to go out and take care of the garbage someplace else, so frees up some time. Questions from anyone else? Ready for a motion? Council President, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a Goods and Services Agreement with Totum Logistics in the amount of $175,000, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Fincher. Real move on, I have a bad cough, my throat itchy. Marina keeps staring at me, saying, what's wrong with you, Marina? I'm not contagious, okay? All right. All right. All righty. I'm going to turn this over.
Thank you, Council President. I have Marina Hansen here to talk about the South King County Housing and Homeless Partners' Work Plan and Operating Budget. Welcome, Marina.
Thank you. If you'll recall, as part of being a member city in the inter-local agreement with the other eight skip cities, every year, we bring back to you our work plan and budget for the coming year. Normally, we don't do this until the winter, but we are aligning this year with King County's request to better align with their process, which is quite lengthy, and we have to get this done by July this year. And it's also going to be aligning more closely with their arch funding recommendations, so they're just trying to bring those two processes in line. So we're here earlier, and normally, we would have the skip executive manager do this presentation, but with the compressed timeline, it's a lot of work to get her out in front of nine different city councils. So I agreed to jump in for, for her tonight, so I'll do my best to answer questions if you have them. But within your packet is the draft work plan and budget as it has been passed by the Executive Board. We started working on it back in February, and so it has been through survey processes. We had an in-person meeting with the skip member cities Executive Board back in, I believe, April, and we also had it vetted through our advisory board, and the staff work group has also had input into the work plan. So as you'll see, there's, it's pretty brief in terms of the four overarching goals. The primary goal is to fund the expansion of affordable housing, and that, of course, is because we now have our skip capital fund. The second goal is to develop policies that expand and preserve affordable housing. Third is to continue to serve as an advocate on behalf of South King County. And fourth is just to manage the operations, operations and administration of skips so that we're ensuring that we continue to be a sustainable organization. Budget is very similar. As you recall, we, there will be that 15% increase through 2026 that just is balancing the budget, but everything is as anticipated. Mayor Ralph currently serves as the Chair of the Executive Board. I'm her alternate, and I also serve on the staff work group, so we've had lots of input into the drafting of the plan. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Marina? No? Okay. All right. I move to approve the 2024 South King Housing and Homelessness Partners' Work Plan and Operating Budget as adopted by the skip Executive Board on May 19th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, we have Lori Gilfoyle to talk about the Multi-Service Center Housing Navigation Agreement.
Good evening. Thank you for this time to be with you. We have been talking about housing navigation for about a year. This is part of our Building Resiliency Plan that we're now putting forward. We know that rent assistance is good, but it's not sufficient. Most of our families need more than just a one-time payment for rent. So this program actually provides for about 90 families for over three months, an assessment that will identify housing goals or other family goals that they want to create, crisis intervention, debt reduction and management, mediation, and connection to resources. We had from 2020 to, of July of 2020 through April of 2023, about 145 eviction filings, and we believe this program will actually help to decrease the number of evictions that are filed. Of those, they don't all end up being evicted, and we also know that about 30% of eviction filings are because of behavior, not only because of rent. And so by mediation, working with property managers, community-based organizations, and the families that need assistance, we believe that we'll be able to help create a place where families can be more stable and remain housed. The commission, our Human Service Commission, did make this recommendation. The total in funds will be a 17-month project if we get into contract by July 1st, is $255,874. And of that funding, $75,000 will be flexible funds to be able to use for whatever families need.
Thank you, Lori. Councilmember Fincher, do you have a question?
I was just going to say 47.
Oh, I said the wrong thing. Sorry. I have trouble with numbers.
Any other questions for Lori? No? Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Multi-Service Center for the Housing Navigation Program, providing up to $255,847 in ARPA funds, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Lori. All right. Up next, we have Brian Levinhagen here to talk about the Lower Russell Levy Setback and the MOU.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, council. It's, it is an odd title for an agenda item, so I apologize for that. I'm happy, I'm Brian Levinhagen, I'm happy to be here to talk about the Lower Russell Levy Setback Project. You can see a recent drone shot of the now mostly complete project, and so, you know, starting at the river, you have the habitat area, the backwater channel, the relocated Van Dorn's Landing Park, and then G R N R in all its glory in the background there. So just an amazing project turned out, just exceeded all of our expectations. So today, I'm here to talk about a memorandum of agreement between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Washington Astoria Preservation Officer. As part of this project, King County Flood Control District is required to get a permit through the Corps, and that permit required a cultural resources report as part of that. Through the process of construction, they also found some culturally significant artifacts, and so that necessitated cultural mitigation as part of the project. And so this agreement, we, Kent is an invited signatory party to, and so kind of give a rundown of kind of the cultural resource mitigation elements included in the agreement. One, obviously, we have tens of thousands of native plantings out there already, but working with the tribe, we tried to identify specific native plants that are culturally significant to them and, and put them in key areas where they could use, be used as teaching elements. We're going to be developing interpretive signage with the tribe, the consulting tribes. It's not out there yet, but it's something that we'll be working through over the next year or so. We have a teaching station out there. We have some logs for seating area and a place for the tribes to do, kind of, just teach small groups, not, not a big area, small groups, kind of the cultural history of the site. The top picture there, you can see barbecue, First Foods Cooking Station. The, the concrete structure on the right is actually for salmon bakes, and so you build a wood fire there, traditionally out of alder. They, they're going to bring their own grills and do a salmon bake right there. The ring on the, on the left is a River Rock shellfish cooking station. So these are elements at the park that are open to the public, but they are reservable by tribal members in advance. So, you know, obviously, anytime you're bringing fire into a park, it's a little bit of a risk. You know, we talked that through with the tribe. They understand, but it's something that's worth trying. It's a cool element, adds to the overall site. On the lower picture, you can see a marker stone at the entrance of the habitat area. There's nothing on it right now, but there will be a tribally significant name for that area, sandblasted onto that stone, but we saw an example at the Michael Shute Tribal Offices, so it looks really nice, so we're excited about that. We're going to be working through some tribal art installations. They'll all be run through the Kent Arts Commission. They'll be also working with our park ops folks to make sure it's durable, but we're excited about kind of that additional element at the park. And cultural resource training for city staff, just a great opportunity to have the consulting tribes come and teach our staff about the kind of history of the Kent Valley before Kent was Kent. Japanese outreach, they actually found some Japanese-American artifacts during construction. And so the Flood Control District is going to be working with the Japanese Cultural Community Center of Washington to try to figure out how we're going to mitigate for that. And then finally, on our website, we're going to include kind of a summary of some of the culturally significant items out. the culturally significant items out at the site and the history of the site with the park page, so.
Brian, can I interrupt you? Councilmember Thomas.
Please, I can wait.
Okay. Yeah. So all in all, you know, I think all things that are added to the site, all things that we would love to do anyways, this is kind of a great opportunity to kind of sit down and have the conversations and work towards incorporating these things into the park. So with that, just questions.
Thank you so much for this presentation. If you haven't been down to Van Doren's Landing Park, it's pretty awesome. So, great work. I'm looking forward to seeing the signage. It's definitely needed and will be appreciated very much. Yeah. All right. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. So Brian, I'm just curious, what kind of archaeological features were discovered?
So mostly fire-modified rock, and so...
Sorry, what?
Fire-modified rock. So basically, my understanding is that this was a site where there were a lot of elderberry plants, and so they'd harvested elderberry and then also cooked shellfish gathered or, you know, other things gathered. So it was kind of like a summer fishing or camp type setup. So...
Okay. No bones?
No. No.
Any other questions for Brian? No? Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Memorandum of Agreement between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Washington State Historic Preservation Office, or, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the City Attorney and Parks Director.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Michelle. We're gonna move on to public safety, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Corr.
Thank you, Council President. We have three items for public safety. First up is our City Attorney, Tammy White, to talk about regional agreement regarding opioid abatement council.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Council, Tammy White, City Attorney. So as you know, the city of Kent has been involved in the class-action litigation that's been ongoing regarding opioids. There's been two settlements in that litigation, both of which have been on a national scale. In one settlement, the state of Washington received $434 million, and a second settlement, state of Washington received $430 million. That settlement is then distributed in the state, 50% to the state, 50% to the counties and local governments. Out of all of that, King County's share and the cities under King County is approximately 26%. Kent's share is 1/2 of 1%. So it's a small amount that we get out of the opioid litigation, but it is money that is starting to come in. So last year, we received roughly $86,000 towards or out of that settlement, and then this year, right now, we're slated to receive around $214,000. The actual amount will change, depending upon the amount that's actually recouped from the defendants in those litigation, and then once it all gets distributed out. But as it's coming in, we're putting it into a project fund. Part of the settlement agreement terms that we had to agree to in order to receive that money is that we would form an opioid abatement council at the county level. And so what that is, is that at the county level, this opioid abatement council will now ensure that we comply with spending the money as we're supposed to. There's certain authorized expenses that we can use that money for, and then to ensure that we file the annual reports that need to be received, and then also through this opioid abatement council, it will create a public dashboard that will show how the opioid money is being spent. So at King County, now what's before you is an interlocal agreement to create this opioid abatement council for us. And the representation on that council is going to follow the amount of money that each agency receives. So King County receives the biggest share of those settlement funds at roughly 13%. The actual numbers are in your motion sheet. Seattle receives the second-largest share at around 6%, and the other 24 remaining cities, including Kent, receive about 6% amongst all of them. So King County will have two representatives on the opioid abatement council, Seattle will have one, and then for all of us remaining 24 cities, we are going to have one representative position that will be appointed through the... Let me make sure I get the organization right. Is it the South County Administration? The South Sound Cities, sorry, or Sound Cities Association? So our representative is gonna be from that organization that will be selected. So as part of that council, we've also agreed to pay administration costs to administer all of this process. The maximum that our administrative cost can be is 10% of the total monies we receive, but what the opioid abatement council in King County are gonna do is, we will pay that 10% out of our real estate excise tax monies that we're to receive, and they will true that up each year. So at the end of the... We'll pay that in advance, and then at the end of the year, they will go through their administrative costs and make sure that we pay nothing more than that percentage that we're supposed to pay. So if we get 1 and 1/2% out of all the settlement funds, that is what we will pay for these administration costs, but in no event can we pay more than 10% of the money we actually receive. So the agreement before you is to create this organization that we will then be a part of. The agreement does need to be signed by all of the member cities that are part of this opioid abatement council by July 1.
Any questions? Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. So Tammy, you said we received $86,000 in 2022. Was that money, has that been spent, or is that still sitting in a pot?
It's still sitting in a pot, and so there is gonna be staff coming back before you in July to talk about the money that we're receiving, what you want to do with that money, and then have some public engagement and discussion about what are our priorities with that money and how do you want it spent? So right now, it's all just being housed.
I just wanted to make sure it hadn't previously been earmarked for another use that we're then going to be going through this council, so, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for Tammy? No? Okay. I'm ready for a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement that creates a King County Opioid Abatement Council to monitor expenditure reporting of settlement funds received through class-action lawsuits related to community impacts from opioids, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Chief Administrative Officer and City Attorney.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. All right. Next, we have purchase of police supplies under cooperative agreement. Assistant Chief Stansfield.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Assistant Chief Matt Stansfield, and I'm here to request authorization for us to purchase police supplies, specifically ammunition, under a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Washington Department of Enterprise Services, what we refer to as state bid. We're looking to change our supplier, which is also another state bid dealer, Dooley's, is a police equipment supplier, to San Diego Police Equipment. We've purchased in the past from San Diego Police Equipment. The mayor has authorized purchases as recently as August of last year, up until her $100,000 authorization. We have pending ammunition purchases that are well within budget that's already been authorized, but that would exceed that $100,000 mark and go over. We're sitting right now at about $81,000 that's been purchased from 2017, when the Department of Enterprise Services first entered into this contract with the state, or I'm sorry, with San Diego Police Equipment, but this next purchase would be about $90,000, and so that would put us well over the $100,000. So that's why I'm here this evening, to ask if anybody has any questions about that.
Wally.
Councilmember Larmour.
I'm just curious, are there no, like, local or Washington State suppliers that would go to San Diego for ammunition?
There are local suppliers, but they are significantly more expensive than what's negotiated on state, by the state, under the cooperative agreement for ammunition. Our previous supplier, Dooley's, we'd been with them for a long time, but they're a national company as well, so we are saving with this agreement about 20% for many of the items that we are purchasing. Part of that is driven by manufacturer change, going from Dooley's to San Diego, but in-state, we can't have anything that matches this.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We're ready for motion. I move to authorize the Police Department to purchase ammunition through the cooperative purchasing agreement the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services has with the San Diego Police Equipment Company, if those purchases are within the city's established budgets and made during the term of the state contract, including any renewals.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for trying to see me.
All right. Next up, we have Victoria to talk about SOAR orders designated, designated no racing zones ordinance. And Tammy White.
Yes. Hi, Council. Tammy White, City Attorney. I actually just wanted to make an introduction. So Victoria Robin has actually been with the city for almost nine years now, but she's been most recently assigned to work as our prosecutor with our Prosecution Department. As you know, we've had some transitions and changes in our office with our Chief Administrative Officer, going down to the mayor's office, me moving up. We then had an available civil attorney position, and Victoria has now transferred over to the Civil Division to help out with specifically some PD matters. So you're gonna be seeing her more. I just wanted to first introduce her to you, and then she's now gonna present the ordinance.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm here this afternoon to present the amendment to ordinance, to amend the code 943030, which is a housekeeping change to add two areas to designate them as no racing zones. These are two areas that have not previously been problem areas in Kent until recently, within the last couple of years. The areas are East Valley Highway between South 180th Street and South 196th Street, which became a problem around the time of September of 2022. Prior to that, it was used as a meetup area for street racers. They would meet up there, and then they would move on to other locations to race. Now, crowds of 100 to 200 people are meeting up in that area and then taking over the roadway. Just within the last six months, there have been at least four shootings in that area. The second area is up at 132nd Avenue Southeast and Southeast Kent Kangley, up near the Trader Joe's parking lot. The street racers are drawn to that area for the large parking lot that the marketplace at Lake Meridian provides as a gathering place, and the large parking lot that allows them to do drifting of their vehicles. It's a popular drifting spot, and the neighbors in that area have complained about the frequent illegal racing activity that takes place. When a person is charged with a racing-related crime, it's a standard condition of their release, either at the time of arraignment or a condition of their sentence at the time they're convicted with a racing-related crime, that they have to abide by a SOAR order. SOAR stands for Stay Out of Areas of Racing. A SOAR order has all of the areas listed that are designated no racing zones that are adopted by 943030. So every area in Kent that's designated as a no racing zone is then listed in the SOAR order. So a person who is restricted by a SOAR order cannot go into those areas in Kent. If they are found in a designated no racing zone by a law enforcement officer, they are in violation of their order. They can be arrested right at that time, and they are subject to... So they're subject to arrest, and they can also be charged with a new crime punishable as a gross misdemeanor. These two areas being left off of the SOAR order means somebody who is restricted by the SOAR order could now go to these two areas and engage in... You know, they could be watching a unlawful racing activity event, or just be in the area and not be in violation of a SOAR order. So somebody who is currently under restriction of a SOAR order could be at one of these places that we're proposing to add and not be in violation of the order. So this is a housekeeping change to add these two places to 943030, essentially to update the code to make sure that we're keeping up with the current racing practices in Kent.
Any questions? Councilmember voice.
Chair Corr, thank you. Any reason why we just couldn't do this citywide? I can see it's kind of me, remind me like a whack... We can be like whack-a-mo, right? So we get this one, and then go another area, another area. Have we thought about just saying the city Kent is a no designated racing zone?
Well, I think we have... Tammy, do you want to chime in? I mean, I like the idea of saying, you know, no illegal activity at all in Kent.
Exactly.
Please, we can deal with it. You know, one, the court typically and can impose a condition of release, that's just a general lease that says, you know, you're not to engage in any racing behavior or be in any place where racing conduct occurs. If they're in violation of that, we can then file like a different contempt of court charge. With this one, though, it's trying to define very specific areas that they need to remain out of, and we also need to be careful about some of the constitutional implications that are in play about a person's freedom of travel from location to location. So we're really trying to be specific and narrow in our regulation, just to avoid challenge.
But when you say travel, I mean, we're not talking travel, we're talking racing, right? So, I mean...
So there are some challenges that come in, and our court deals with it occasionally. Like, what if a person wants to go to that grocery store that's their Trader Joe's? They're not engaging in unlawful activity, but I just want to go there and get groceries to make dinner tonight. Should I truly be now facing criminal charges because I want to go to the grocery store? So we're just, some of those interests that are in play, we're trying to take a careful balance in what we do, and so that's why we don't have this prohibition generally across the entire city, though we can deal with it in a very different way, just about that court condition that the court can impose, that if you are now in an area and we get a police report from an officer that says, "Hey, I contacted so-and-so at this race, and I know they have this case going on," even without these SOAR orders, we can file a contempt of court charge on them and get criminal charges that way.
Okay.
Those are the options that we have available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Victoria, I noticed when I'm driving to South Center, for example, that I think, I don't know if it's Renton or Tucorilla that posts no racing between certain times. Are these SOAR area zones, are they gonna be posted to the general public? You know, I mean...
So that Kent does not have specific times on our...
Forget the times. Forget the times. Just the fact that it's a, this zone is a no racing zone.
There are signs posted in Kent.
Good. Thank you.
Yes.
But not yet at these locations.
At these two locations. If council adopts this ordinance and these two locations are added to the code, then yes, these two areas will be posted with signs.
Super. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Larmour.
Well, I think Tammy actually touched on my question, so I was curious about the, if these were somehow time-boxed or activity-boxed. You know, my question was, like, if you do want to go get groceries at Trader Joe's, is that in violation of your SOAR order? Or if you work off 180th or something?
So the order says that you're to stay out of areas of racing. So you are prohibited from being in that area, but the court will always ask the defendant, "Do you have reason to be in that area?" So if the person lives or works within that area, then the court will modify the order to allow them to go within that area. So, for example, if they work at Trader... Say this area by Trader Joe's gets added, and they work in that parking lot, or they have reason to deliver to that parking lot, the court will modify the order to ensure that they are not then in violation of it, or that the order does not render them unemployed. The SOAR order, the language that we're proposing to add, is also the street, not the parking lot, but the ordinance or the code allows for adjoining areas. 943030 subsection B includes adjoining areas. It says, "No racing zones include any highway as that term is defined in RCW 4604197, together with adjoining property areas such as sidewalks, entryways, landscaped areas, and parking areas." So that would include the parking lot if those adjoining areas are being used for racing or unlawful race attendants. So they're not gonna be in trouble for being in the parking lot next to that no racing zone if they're not there for a racing event.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. So racing's not legal in the, like, the entire city. This is something separate, right? This is, if a convicted racer goes into this area, they have extra punishment, I guess you could say. So, street racing is not legal in all of Kent. But if they go to these areas, they will get in extra trouble. Correct. Okay. So then my second question is specifically for Kent Kangley and 124th, 132nd. It says Southeast Kent Kangley Road from 124th to 132nd. So they're doing this also on both of those roads, 132nd and 124th. Does this only include Kent Kangley, or does it also include 124th and 132nd?
So the way it is written right now, it would just be Kent Kangley from 124th to 132nd, that highlighted portion. And Commander Bava is here. I don't know if he wants to chime in on that part. So it would just be that section of Kent Kangley. There's concern that it's happening on 124th and 132nd as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I'm flipping back to the adjoining areas.